Alright, it is. I'm gonna call the meeting to order of the open space committee at five twelve Monday, January seventeenth, five twelve P M. First things, we're gonna stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Underneath this mask. I said my voice sounds so gay.
Alright, so I always leave, I always leave a placeholder for announcements, but we don't have any announcements. So the first thing we'll start with is old business, which was to review and discuss the open space handbook, which I had sent you guys. Prior to our last meeting, and that was just gave us some general information on.
Yep.
On what? Really kind of different avenues we can explore through open space, well, through our committee and how we can collaborate with others. Did you, I know Dave, you would say because we had talked the last time.
You have to finish product.
So yeah, this is actually, and I sent you guys this in a PDF file, but if you wanna, you know.
Can you get one of these like already printed a little?
I can actually, I'll reach out to them, because I think that one was through UMass Amherst. I can reach out and see if I can get a couple printed copies.
I thought we have.
Oh, yeah, no, they had just sent out one to the.
Can I, can I keep this from my possession?
Yeah, take it on.
Yeah, we'll just rotate everybody. We do have a digital copy because I sent that out in an email.
Yes, and. Yeah, so like you. You know, I looked at it, so I read it. And the other, I'm like, oh, we gotta, I gotta meet, I wanna read the handbook again, I wanna go. My problem, I just couldn't, I couldn't access.
It happened. I can't find Zoom link sometime, like if you have a lot of emails, and then it just gets lost in the shuffle.
Somehow it's.
Yeah. So like that, that has a lot of good information on, you know, kind of the, just the general overview of what we're trying to do as a committee. And who we wanna partner with as far as other committees and different projects, I mean, we might wanna tackle. So that, I mean, that's really just a reference, so it's, you know, we don't need to sit there and flip through the whole thing together and talk about it. I just wanted to make sure that everybody did get the PDF copy.
Thank you.
I don't think we need to have any big discussion on that. We'll just, we'll, we'll use that as we progress. To.
And it's good for ideas.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, like we talked about, you know, like this silly things in there that you would never think of, but there was like a wood bank. Which like for a community like this, where it's still, we're still rural, there's probably elderly people that burn wood that aren't able to go out and cut and split wood anymore. So something like that might be a good idea, and it's a good way for our committee to give back to the, to the community as well, but something that we wanna explore. And we could probably get some other folks involved as well. We'll jump right into it, into a new business. So when we had met previously, we had spoke about collaborating with other committees and commissions. I did reach out and we all saw those emails, where we were trying to get kinda other people to hop on board with us. And then that kinda scale made it just because there was an overwhelming amount of different meetings in December, then we have the holidays. And, and now we're going into like the startup budget reviews. So that's something that will probably, I think we'll try to actively still reach out to those, those folks from, it was like the agricultural commission. Trails Committee, trying to think of.
It makes sense to go to that model you spoke about, go to the CPC model.
Correct.
Because then if you got a couple missed, and I've had that where I could, I don't have a quorum, I can't meet.
Right. Yeah, and we're in the same boat, because there's only three of us that are voting members, so we had that last happen last time, where it's like, unfortunately, if one of us has. Yeah. You know, file or have a family member. So I think we'll actively keep pursuing that, we'll try to make that happen maybe for the month of February, pull those folks in and then. I also don't wanna, we're gonna have to make sure that the interest is there for them to participate too. I don't wanna be.
Forces.
You know, put the cart before the horse in motion that we add these people or, you know, to the committee before we know that they're even interested in, in participating.
Would it be helpful before we invite them, maybe we could shoot to have them come in in March? Because we could use our February meeting to think about who we wanna work with and like specifically on what.
Right.
Because I think if we have an idea of what the goal is or what the project is.
Right.
It might be better, like, it's better to get someone interested if you can describe like what the goal is or what the project is.
Right.
So maybe we could just use the next month to like brainstorm ideas off each other and. And see what we wanna do.
Of course, I sent fifty million emails, but. I'm just trying to go back real quick and see exactly who we did reach out to.
Well, conservation you mentioned.
Yeah, it was the, yeah, and actually the, the conservation agent got back to us, but she's not gonna participate, it would be the conservation commission.
Sure.
Again, a representative from them. It was the same thing with the agricultural commission, who I don't think we heard back from. Trails Committee.
We're gonna meet tomorrow.
So yeah, if you wanna kinda just put a bug in the area that we'd like to. Trails Committee was interested, they, they were one of the ones that had a snafu with. I have meetings for this, this, and this, so they weren't able to come.
This land use. Cemetery Commission.
Land use makes a lot of sense, because land use committee, like we're just a recommending committee.
Right.
Land use committee is the actual committee that makes decisions on like what we should auction, what, you know, what we should keep, what makes sense, like what could we connect it with. So it might make sense to talk to them, I think that that would.
Just trying to make sure that we don't have like anybody sitting in a waiting room.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and you, we really, I mean, you could, you could just stop adding and adding and adding, it's like you, technically you can make an argument that the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, like. All these people in essence could, but I don't think we need to have them involved on a monthly basis, I think that would.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like obviously, when we start working on the residential design by law, we might wanna.
You know, when I read that, the design by law, it's like, we gotta get everybody, we gotta get every committee together.
Yes.
And I'm like, how is that gonna happen?
Yeah, it takes, it takes time, yeah, it takes time.
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna definitely need input. So actually, yeah, so we'll, we'll continue in our next meeting to reach out for. Yeah, I think I would agree that for March that we start to really put together our collaboration, so we'll take the time in February's meeting to. Decide exactly who we wanna, you know, invite, and then for March, we'll start trying to put, put a team together, so to speak. So the next thing under new business is the open space residential design by law, which that was another thing, I, I had sent some examples. Of Westport.
I couldn't.
Didn't Lakeville had just recently put together? Did Lakeville put together open space? Or did they just have an open space plan? Because I remember when we were working on.
Definitely just did a master plan, which has a huge open space component.
Yep.
But I, and I'm pretty sure they probably do have an open space plan.
Because I remember back when we were taught, kinda towards the tail end of the open space plan with Ellen and Jess, that we were starting to talk about this, and I think there were some examples. Sent out for some of that too. Let me check if I can try to pull up some of that info that I kind of shared back then. There's also two, if you go on, on mass.gov, and I don't think I had the chance to send you guys the links for that, I think I just sent you the examples of Westport. But there's a, there's quite a bit of existing law.
Yeah.
Already written, you know, on a state level that ties back into. What we're gonna try to do. So it's, it's, yeah, and so it's one of, we don't wanna, we, I mean, we wanna make it our own.
Yeah.
But we also don't need to reinvent the wheel, so.
But what some communities do in situations like that is simply, and I think we did this in the right to farm by law, just refer to whatever those. State statutes or whatever are, so that you're not rewriting, you don't need to rewrite what is already written.
Right.
On the books. Are you looking there as a? To see if they have.
No, I'm just trying to pull up just some, some neighboring. Neighbor in town, so we can kinda talk about. Because we, I'm using the computer for zoom. I don't know if any, I don't, with, do you know what Dover, Mass is?
It's a rural town, but it's not near here.
Right, I know, it's like out in western, but like, this is, like, this is just one of the worst first ones that popped up, so they actually have a collaboration with Mass Audubon.
Oh.
And have a whole agenda of why they're looking for to do open space residential design by laws.
So we actually do have a contact at Mass Audubon, Nancy and I. From just going to different.
Yeah.
Conferences and whatnot, you meet people from like nature conservancy.
Yes.
Mass Audubon. I bet you they would volunteer to help as well, like Bill is, for actually like putting pen to paper and getting some kind of like a draft going.
Right.
You know, it's got some nice, you're talking about Autobahn and stuff like that.
Dartmouth. Yes, Dartmouth has a really, really good relationship. And most of those organizations are willing to work with you if you reach out to them.
No, they get excited when they hear the communities wanna do this kinda stuff.
Well, and if they've been through the process with, you know, twenty other towns, then they can, and the same thing goes for Bill, like Bill is, you know, was really.
Okay.
Yeah, where is he?
The glue that held us together.
Listen to him was that first meeting.
Yeah.
And I went, oh, yeah, he likes.
He's won EPA awards, like, just like, he's helped so many towns and communities, yeah.
Nice guy.
Yeah, so just like take, for example, like this is just a small example from that town of Dover of showing, you know, an overview of what the, just what the physical difference is. Of having, you know, your typical clustered. Development versus incorporating open space, which is obviously. What we're, and there too, like look at the overview of the map, look how much.
Oh, how it changed.
How much it changed.
Okay, I see, when they passed the by law.
So, which is. Under a convention, just to give you an example of how they did this, under a conventional. Development design, this had thirty-eight units with no open space and no rural character, they offered them their alternative open space plan, they actually expanded. The number of units, they decreased the individual lot sizes to increase the units, but they created. Sixty-eight percent more open space. So.
Still more units, so we'll have to address that. We don't wanna.
Yeah, we don't wanna go.
Well, but I like the open space.
Well, that's, and that comes into the conversation when we, when you start talking to the planning board, the zoning board, is like you almost, you have to give a little to get a little, because.
That gives you a bargaining.
Good, well, we all know that, especially nowadays, and when you go into these developments, when you talk, even if it was a three acre yard, it's three acres of grass that doesn't offer much. Other than, you know. Land, you know, landscaping, not landscape, so it's like, you know, if you. So if a developer came to us and said, you know, I wanna build thirty-eight units like this, so with no open space, or I wanna build forty units with, you know, sixty-eight percent more open space. Well, that's a conversation that you almost have to have.
Where I live.
If you're conserve, if you're gonna conserve, you know, wooded areas.
Yeah.
You know, but again, give a little to get a little, because we don't wanna, you know, jump. I think if that number Brett was, you know, if it went from thirty-eight to say it was seventy-five, then I think it's a concerning. You know, that would be a concerning jump, but I don't think, you know, jumping, what, eight units? To gain.
No, I understand, no, I, I understand.
But that's.
A developer, the developer will study your little plan, you know, and whatever you've got, you know, somehow they'll try to.
Well, that's the reason why we wanna put this in place, because then it holds them accountable, and, and this is, this becomes how you have to do it, it's not.
Yeah.
There's no, there's gonna be no way to skirt around this.
Like Dr. Z could tell you, they got rid of the golf course where I live, and make it open space and try to make a deal on finishing that job, things have been dragging on since.
Yeah.
Two thousand two or something.
Yeah.
Right, two thousand two, so I've only been here eight years, and I mean, nothing's, I mean, it takes some like.
So did they build houses where the golf course was supposed to go?
I don't build anything, they, they haven't gone past phase one or not.
Yeah, there's like a whole sewer thing, and that's why.
How about the sewer?
They can't, he's, they can't build more houses until they build a sewer, and he wants to do a septic, I think, instead, obviously.
Well, just.
Cost effective for the business, but it is what it is, and the permit, you know, is what it is, so. It, it provides a treatment, but they're saying that they're keeping it open for open space instead of.
I believe it's gonna be open space, it's not gonna be anything built on it, you know, so was that your question?
Yeah, that's what I meant, because I was, what's more, what's.
Behind my house is open.
To me, golf courses.
My actual residence, where I live on Hunter's Hill Drive. The whole back is open space right there because it's all ledge.
Right.
So if they initially wanted to build on that, they would have had a blast.
Yeah, yeah.
Take that ledge out, but I'm very fortunate, it's all ledge, and there's some kind of growth on top of like grass.
Right.
But you can't build on it unless you, you would have to blast out a foundation.
One nice thing too about going back to like trying to collaborate with like Mass Audubon is Mass Audubon has different avenues too, where like. We can actually get kickbacks because Mass Audubon typically wants to promote habitat for, say, specific types of birds or things. Because I got, I saw it happen down in Falmouth, Mass, where like they ended up, you know, cutting up actually a piece of forest to, you know, promote a specific type of grass, because there was a, you know, an endangered bird that inhabited the area. So they can kinda bring up some different avenues as far as. Ways to keep. Keep up with the landscape or improve the landscape as well for, you know, the, the wild.
Yeah, it's a lot of good ideas out there. I think a lot of these people are becoming more aware of the environment and. Towns just don't want you to come in, I don't know if you've ever been out to Colorado?
No.
No, I want to.
It's a beautiful state, but they do a lot of developing, like they build an entire, almost like a small town in six months, I mean, they buy. When they, they don't have, they don't give you a big lot there, but the houses are kinda close together, it's beautiful. But the way they set it up, it's very, you know, like they have ground, they have stone instead of grass. Because they have, they don't have a lot of water resources, they're very, they ration their water, because it's tight out there, it's dry out there. And the, that's the future, where we're gonna get the water, but people are moving in there like you wouldn't believe it, but they have zoning. But if you went there, you'd say, well, this is beautiful, but there's no, where's my yard? There is no yard, you don't have much of a yard. Unless you have a lot of money to buy it through your space. That's how it is, yeah, so who makes the money really?
So basically, the goal, they kinda outline of, it's, I know you can't see from here, so I'll just say what it, number three really points out like kinda like what the point is, so. Number one, how to design an open space residential design by law, it says. Calculate the traditional amount of allowed lots, removing unsuitable building areas, including wetlands, because obviously, you know, there are conservation restrictions. Two, identify significant natural, cultural, and/or historic features. Three, concentrate development away from those features through flexible requirements to achieve a similar amount of lots. I feel like, why does it, why do we have to achieve a similar amount? I feel like I disagree with you.
Yeah.
I feel like the whole point is to preserve the open space and have less lots, because now you're preserving more, not like scrunch everything together. Because the other thing is the town of Dayton, whether we do this open space residential design by law or not, still has a minimum lot requirement irrespective of what this is.
Yeah.
Um, so this would change by right development to be open space development, like where you design your. Uh, I don't know what to call it, subdivision, um, around the natural resources, so that you're not, or you're being, they call it low impact, you know, low impact development.
And that's really point number four, was to preserve permanently at least half of the land, whether for natural agricultural forests use. And I would agree, could, well, perfect example is. Forest Hill Estates was an open space. Development, a conservation subdivision, and it had, you know, it preserved open space in the back, but it had a ton of lots, so. And I don't.
But I think the by law, the point of the by law, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe I need to like go back and really like delve into it. But my understanding is, if you're saying our goal by doing this by law is to preserve, let's just pick a number, sixty-six percent. Of open space in like any given area, I, I'm not, I'm not using my words correctly, but you know, you, I think you get the gist of what I'm saying. That should mean less houses, because again, irrespective of what Dover is doing in this example, we still have a minimum lot size. So when we say you have to conserve sixty-six percent, that doesn't mean the developer can then scrunch the houses together.
What is our minimum lot size right now?
I wanna say. It's like. I think it's less than an acre, point seven, point eight? An acre?
Yeah, the zoning.
The by law.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can look that up.
I have a copy at home.
Do you think that's something that we would explore? Well, see, and I don't know, so I, I've never looked at, I've never looked at the plans for, say, forest films. So what were the lot sizes that were being used there? Were they using the minimums?
That I don't.
See, like, I feel like, how do you fit that many houses?
This is why we need to pull in like people from other.
Right.
I don't like, I'm not like an expert on things for like planning zoning, it's like they really are like the experts, like I, I, I don't, I'm not like into the nuts in the.
Right, because there, there must be something in place that must bypass. The minimum lot size for developments, because I. I don't know, so like now.
For forty B, yeah, forty B, correct, because that's like the state empowers that and allows them, okay, so we understand that, that's in a separate category. I'm not sure that's necessarily true. I do think, however, certain developers in certain developments can try to get variances for things like that.
I guess.
But that's up to the whim of the board, you know, of that particular board. I guess my whole thing would be. Before we even like start to put pen to paper, maybe let's take a month to digest what Bill sent us and what you've sent us. And let's think about what the goals are gonna be for February, meaning. Are, is it a trade-off? I don't wanna trade off, I don't think we have to have a trade-off, we have enough development, so my position is, I feel like it should mean more open space, less houses, not.
May vary.
Correct.
You're trying to keep what we have, you're trying to keep what we have, not.
But not trade it, we don't have to trade it, they think if they want, what they want, then they can go to another town, I don't say that as like being rude, it's just like.
No, I can agree with that.
There's only so many resources and services before.
Right.
The system.
And the fact of the matter is, there's only so much land in this town, like it's, this, this is not a huge, huge town, you know.
Correct.
Well, there's a lot of swamp, wetlands, and rocks, yeah, there's a lot of rocks.
Lot of, lot of, lot of, lot of wetland, too, yeah.
Which is always like another argument, it seems like to be, there's a way to skate around these things one way or another.
Well, like wetlands are hard, because of like the conservation regs and stuff that comes from the state, that's why we need something for open space, because that's not something that's like automatically protect, that's not protected at all.
Right.
So that's why we need to think about like, what's the best way? Because maybe what is good for Dover, then doesn't work for Dayton, so we need to think about like what are our goals?
Well, right there, I mean, so calculate the, I, I, I would totally bypass to calculate the traditional amount of allowed lots, because we're not as, we're not. Interested in developing to the max period. So it's really, two and three would be our, our, you know, quote unquote homework, identify significant, significant natural, cultural, or historic features. We have that on our biomap, which is in the open space plan, which shows where we know where our wetlands are and all those other.
You're saying that Dover, what is that, I'll look it up on, you know, Dover, Mass?
Dover, I, I mean, I just pulled up something just to give us like an example of some, something that somebody else in the state is doing.
This is good, because now we see that it's, that these bylaws, A, that people are doing it, and B, that it's not one size fits all, and I think you probably can. Make it fit, just like our right to farm by law wasn't exactly what Rehoboth was, it's very similar, you know what I mean?
Right.
But it was tweaked a little.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, every town is, is different.
It's a gem, it's like a gem of Bristol County, that's what we, we say.
It's a gem. I'm more like a diamond in the rough.
Right, and just we both said it at the exact same time.
That's me.
Yeah, like, and so like, like we know.
Classic, did I?
Like, for historic, like, we know, like, we have the Council of, and, and, you know.
Like the War District and of, like on Pleasant Street and like that whole beautiful area.
Right.
Like where the Winslow Davis houses, there's some things that we can put on there.
Yeah.
Russell.
Right, because we'll say, say for example, like this would be a prime example of how this could affect somebody, is like, as I just know this, is so we know that William Street is here, Center Street is here, Winslow Davis is here. There's a huge trunk of property right here.
Yeah.
With an elderly gentleman, where that's, that's like, that's the potential for somebody to swoop in, and then this is how we wanna prevent this from being encroached on. By having, you don't wanna have.
That's what I mean, exactly.
You don't wanna, you don't want Winslow Davis Museum looking at sixteen new houses.
The whole point, just like, again, please know, I'm only speaking for myself, but my whole thing is like, if you make this by law, I don't wanna say too restrictive, because like people have a right to sell their land, like whatever.
Right.
Okay, we all understand that and agree, but you could potentially make the by law such that this wouldn't be an attractive project for someone, they would just say, we'll find somewhere else.
Right.
To do this project, away from this particular, in your example, the Winslow Davis Museum on the corner.
Right.
So, that's, that's like what my thinking is. Because like it's, it's special, like you, we want a subdivision behind them.
Well, no, that's exactly what I mean, you, you wouldn't wanna have, you know, twenty twenty-two cookie cutter colonials.
Correct.
Looking at this or this looking at that, that just doesn't, doesn't, that takes away from the rural character of the town. So.
Yeah, like I said, let, let's put, I think we should put the horse before the cart on this, and really just think about like, before we even start thinking about like the specifics. What are our goals? Like, do we really wanna preserve open space? And have less houses built, or do we wanna start having conversations with developers and like get to, you know, let's make a deal situation, so.
Can I make a, a little bit of a, that's probably gonna be. Questionable question, so, it is, it is, so we all know that financially, solar farms are good for the town. What's the, what's the real impact though of a solar farm on, oh, because it's not, it's, I mean, is it open space? Yes, but it's also not at the same time.
Yeah, well.
Like, so you have massive deforestation.
Correct.
To create a solar farm, so is that something that we should incorporate into our open space by law?
If that's what we wanna do.
And I think, I think there's been some talk around town too about limiting, you know, the amount of solar farms we have, because. I mean, granted, you don't have to provide the services for solar panels, but we're still encroaching on our open space and taking away from our, our landscape at the same time.
So there's two things with solar farm, A. In my opinion, just personal opinion, so I. In my opinion, just personal opinion, so I obviously am okay with green energy, but I do have an issue. When they're so visible, because then I feel like that does kind of, I don't wanna say ruin the rural character of the town, but like.
Right.
Your country, your country town, and like a solar farm, isn't part of the natural landscape, and the other thing is. I understand that there are people that say, well, you know, sometimes you have to choose, and I've said this too, between a house. And a solar farm, and I think most people will choose the solar farm just because, in that situation, because. Theoretically, after so many years, when the pilot expires or whatever, that stuff can come down and like. It could return to nature, so in that regard, okay, that makes sense, but.
But it does. Plus its income for the, for the time.
Yes.
You know, that's a.
Well, it's just, I think we need to be proactive when and put the thought into when we're working on this though. Because we don't want every single piece of, you know, significant piece of land to become a solar farm, because it takes away from. What we wanna visually see for the town.
The, the real solar farms I have an issue with are the ones where they bulldoze all the trees. If you have, like if some landowner somewhere has in their backyards a big open. And wants to put a solar farm up, I don't have an issue with that, but it's when someone makes. Basically makes land amenable for a solar farm, which means. All the wildlife are displaced, uh you know, and I don't mean to be like that person, but those are real.
That's the truth behind it, is because now like, and everybody, you know, it's, yes, it's green energy, but you have this. You know, deficit of.
It doesn't make any.
Of carbon footprint, because you've destroyed this much oxygen producing tree.
Fighting ideas just by your face.
Exactly.
Correct.
Well, and like the perfect case in point, and I think we're fortunate in this town that we don't drive down a lot of our main roads. And have to look at these things as of right now, which is great. The perfect example though is, I think we've all driven through Berkeley, like if you're gonna go down Padelford Street to get on twenty four.
Yes.
Haskins Farm was in the other farm just prior to it, were absolutely beautiful, and then like when it first happened, you were like, oh my god.
Yeah.
Like you almost like, I mean, for myself, cuz like I really enjoy driving through like the country, it's like, you hit that and you're like, I don't even wanna drive this way.
It's shocking.
It's shocking, you're like, I don't wanna drive.
What is that?
This, right.
Doesn't make any sense.
I think that's something that, as you know, not. Does it steer away from residential design in, in a way, well, I still think we need to be active in this committee and. Preventing it from getting out of control.
Mm hmm, yeah, I I totally agree, in that part, we would definitely work with. Planning and zoning, they're already, and I know this from being on the zoning board, there are already certain things on the books. And we never want to overplay our hand or like step on anyone's toes or encroach on anyone's what, whatever. Cut my teeth in a, on a solar farm. Yeah, I had to go out there and like look at them.
That was, that was interesting.
It was, yeah, I learned a lot from that. But I also learned like what may not be good necessarily for the town, and you know.
That's good, well, you grew up here too.
Yeah, absolutely, and solar farms were not like a thing when I, as you know, Dave, they were not a thing.
No.
And it's like everything.
I don't even think solar lanterns that you suck in your garden.
The only solar we knew of came from the sun.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, but was it uh? The planning board working on something with solar farms to try to change how we do things with solar farms?
They may be.
There is something in the mix, I don't know all of it, that you can.
Everybody's talking about it right now, development industry was talking about it, we're talking about it, Dan's talking about it.
We're gonna, we should all.
Get together.
Be representative from all those relevant stakeholders, and maybe it's a subcommittee, like if you, if they don't come to argue. There's a separate. Yeah. To talk just that, but my point is like, anything can be good, like, and anything can be bad. But it's about the, it's about like how it's regulated or how, how much of it, cuz we have too much of something. To money solar farms, then I think it can be.
And the same goes for.
Then you get some complaints rightfully about the cat, rural character of the town, um and you know, and then the deforestation and things like that. And people are really concerned about it, and rightfully, so I think it should, it's a real issue that needs to be. Discuss and many viewpoints should be heard on that, and then we should come to some kind of, and I don't know what it will be. Some kind of a consensus.
Yeah, well, you take a forest, cut it down, people used to walk through it, now they cut it down, it's all.
Yeah.
You know how many solar farms that I used to pick? In the farm. And those are being dropped off, I mean, uh Middle Street and Treadmont Street, I used to.
That one right on the corner?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Huge park in those fields.
Alright, so again, we have a little homework tonight, Mr. Berkman loves my homework. So I think we'll do.
I like to learn.
A little, a little bit of research, just um checking in with our zoning bylaws.
Yeah.
Um to see what our minimum lot sizes are, see if there's any special provisions for subdivisions, which I don't think there are, but at least we'll look into it. Um and also, well, actually too, we can look up the history to see if these, like a forest hill is applied for a variance to, to reduce the lot size. So I'll kind of look into that, maybe we can, but again, like, so I know we sent, oh, West, I sent over Westport's open space, we kind of. Try to, like I just Google search open space residential by law mass.
Yep.
Try to find some towns that are similar to our landscape.
I caught that. I'll, I'll learn a lot, just.
So, well, cuz we, we wanna.
We, well, you wanna be educated and prepared when you go up against, or not up against, but go in and try to mix.
Well, some of these towns too might have one, a wonderful idea that we probably otherwise wouldn't have thought of, and then just like you're saying, to to look at it over is. They have things that we definitely don't wanna do either, so we can kind of come up with that list of do's and don'ts, and then progress from there. So.
That sounds good, and then, and then again, just like, let's all four of us think about what we wanna get. Out of this bylaw, and I mean theoretically in a perfect world, before we start talking to anyone or writing anything. Exactly.
What's our goal, what's our mission, what's our plan and all that? Once we, once we have a goal, then we have to get everybody, all the committees.
Well, I think.
Why don't we get the committees together and then form a goal?
Well, what we can.
I mean, I'm just.
Good, good point.
If we can get everybody together. To have something to put the carrot out.
Well, no, we can go back to keep it simple, we can go back to just like the beginning of the open space plan.
Yeah.
Is we can assemble a questionnaire, which is fantastic, because then you have it. Right here, and it's not like, oh, what did Brian from such and such say?
And it went smoothly, like no one had any issues.
Yeah, it's very easy.
We incorporated everything that they wanted or wanted to see in it.
In my mind, and in my infant mind, I should say, well, no. Cuz I'm new, that's why I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you're learning. But if we can set our goal, if they, if they're not gonna comply, or they think that we've got three heads. We, we, we don't.
Well, no, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Exactly.
So if we get, prepare them, what we're thinking, and then get their input.
Yeah.
Might be, might be a little smoother.
And they probably have like ideas too, I would suspect.
You would hope so.
Yeah. That's perfect, and then we could even, cuz it is tough to like get everyone, we can think about like trying to get everyone in the same room. And like have a hybrid meeting, maybe some people wanna use Zoom.
Yeah.
Um so that we can get, it'll be quite a lot of people, which is good.
Yeah, or even, I mean, we, we, we know this is not gonna happen overnight, we're not gonna write this in the course of a month anyway. So it might come down to just for scheduling purposes that we meet with two or three committees. You know, in such and such a month and then.
Now, what other town, local towns already have the new bylaw, is there, is there many?
That's a good question, I mean, we can do a little research and see.
Oh, I'll find that, I'll, I'll, I did. You know, cuz once you go to a town site and you look at the open space, it's gonna say they're. They're by.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's gonna have a date on it.
Absolutely. Bill should know that too.
Yeah, actually, I can send out an email to Bill and be like, hey, you know, what are, you know, what are the figures, but. And what's, he'll be able to provide, like probably off the top of his head, examples of like, oh, you wanna look at, you know, like you said. Yeah, so that's just another thing to think about before our next meeting, is is topic, is topics for a questionnaire that we would wanna ask other committees, so.
I think.
Kind of jot those down as you get them.
Well, I even think it's a better idea to do the questionnaire first. Get all the feedback, then start meeting with them, you can really.
Right, that's my thought, it would be, if we can, in our next meeting, produce a questionnaire.
Okay, we have the one that they did, we could just.
Model off of that.
Model off the one that was already sent, which was a few years back. Let's do it, yeah, it was a few. It wasn't that long, it was like what, twenty, I think Mister Taylor, yeah, was still an elected.
But I mean, it's still, it's still not like, you know. Not that much has changed that.
No.
It's gonna be irrelevant, so yeah, I'll, I'll find that through our Google Docs, that way you don't, we don't have to like go searching for it, and I'll send that to you. And then, yeah, we can build off of that, yeah, because essentially the open space plan is gonna tie back into.
Yeah.
And and actually, a lot of, we might even be able to actually answer a lot of the questionnaire questions ourselves off the open space plan, because. Uh it does have our goals and stuff in it too, so.
Okay, that's awesome.
Alright, so we know what we're up against till for February.
Okay.
Um so our next order of business was our minutes was to approve the minutes for November eighth, which I'd send you guys in the emails, did you have a chance to review?
I guess, I, I did see him. I don't have any questions or corrections or additions or. Now, that was the first meeting that I went to.
Yeah.
You did that.
Yep. Yeah, so if somebody wants to make a motion.
To approve the minutes from what month?
That was.
November.
November.
November twenty one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, so we have, we have minutes are approved for November.
Can I say one last thing before I depart? So on my end, what I'll do, and I know Dave, you're, you're gonna do this too, in our Google Drive for the committee. I will also do some research on like different towns and communities that have open space residential bylaws, and when I get the copy. Will, I'll make a folder and like start dropping them in, and then like, we can categorize it by community.
Okay.
And I think that, then we can have a better idea of like.
That's smart.
I think that's pretty good, and then Bill will help us with that as well. Alright, everybody, have a good night, good work.
Alright, so public input, we don't have anybody joined us.
Why does no one join us? This is the cool committee, why does no one come to our meeting?
Um so.
Hey, nice seeing you.
Have a good night, gentlemen.
You as well.
The temperature is supposed to drop.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Me is a jour. At five fifty five.
We got six o'clock up the street here. DG, the development industrial. Up at the old town, it's not that far from you.